Okay, good evening and welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals. We'll be calling the meeting to order and ask everyone to please silence their cell phones at this time. I will point out in the crowd, we do have a feathered friend flying around who's taken up residence in the room this afternoon. We've opened up the side door over here in hopes that he'll find his way out, but he hasn't done that yet. But just so everyone's aware, we do have a bird flying around. I'll introduce the board at this time, starting on my far right. Your far left is Jerry Potomac, who is an associate member of the board. To his left is James Morse, who is a full voting member. To my right is Scott Zalinski, who is the board's vice chair. My name is TJ Hurry, I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Bob Dugan, who is the board's clerk. Also with us tonight is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary for the night. Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing, and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comments should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium to your left, and we ask you to please state your name and address for the record. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. The board will then either continue or close the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and potential decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves. We would make a motion to deny or approve, that would be made and voted upon. Motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment followed by one continuation, four new hearings, and we do have a few items on our open meeting agenda. So up first is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone out there has anything to say for something that's not on the agenda, just raise your hand, sir?
Yeah?
Sure.
Mr. Myers?
Sure, feel free to come up to the podium.
I'm not a public speaker, so you have to bear with me on this. What I'm here about is the lack of enforcement for our zoning board. I've been through it for the last two years with a 40B project being built next to me. And all through it, it's been disappointing, to say the least. I, we went to neighborhood meetings, we came here. You couldn't have the meeting here because we had so many people, we had to go to the library. And we hammered it all out, and we ended up with a ton of conditions. All of which were good, but all of which weren't, I don't think any of them were enforced. There was a big issue on safety being, having water, having the water in the hydrants in before any building permits were issued. All 12 were issued before the hydrants were working. I still don't know if they got the pressure, and I don't care now. The planning board originally sent a plan up, okaying it, supporting the plan that one house would be four feet off the lot line next to my horse corral with no fence, nothing but a, their buffer, their natural buffer was called, it's wood chips. So this, you know, there's another safety thing. What if you have children walking across? So we had to pay, hire a lawyer to get a fence put up. And the developer, rather than work with a neighbor, would rather hire a lawyer and fight it. So that's who's making the money on this, is the developer and lawyer. Having no interest at all what happens to the people. There was no consideration for neighbors. Joe's, my, the neighbor on the other side is a disabled veteran. There was no consideration given to him. I sent letters in, I sent a letter in. First, I sent it and registered to various town, the planning board, building department, a couple others. And I got absolutely nothing back on it. So then I came down and I hand carried it around and delivered it and got it signed for, and nothing. This actually, and then I started bringing it in every time that I had a complaint of working out of hours, working on Sundays, whatever. Whatever they weren't doing according to the conditions. And at least eight times I brought it in. But then the pandemic came in, so you couldn't, couldn't get anywhere with anything. You'd call, trying to find, like trying to find out about the water being approved. Start with the zoning board, they said they hadn't heard anything. They said, go to the engineer, so you go to the engineer, go to the fire department, go to the building department, nobody knows. Go back to the zoning board, is all they tell you. So they ran me in circles a lot and got nothing out of it. Even, and there's been nothing, nothing done for the public, for the people. And the town manager, I asked the selectmen, I dropped them off at the select board. Never heard a thing from them. The only one I ever heard from is Noreen and Ashley and the board, which set up these conditions and say, why don't they do it? I don't know. Now it goes to again, finally, a couple of Saturdays ago, because they were starting work at Saturday, Saturday mornings at seven instead of eight. The zoning enforcer, or whatever he's called, Jonathan, went there before seven, and yes, they were working. So he talked to them and said he was going to write a complaint or whatever. But what happens that very same day is instead of getting through at four o'clock, they worked until almost six o'clock. And after that, the holiday last week, three different contractors were working over there all day. And this is just, they're just thumbing their nose at you people. You go through all your work and get nothing. And it's shame on me when I found out the land, land was for sale because I thought I couldn't afford to buy it. Well, it doesn't matter, I lost anyways. After I heard it was going in, I put my house up for sale. Had over 100 people look at my house and say, that's a nice setup, it's a nice house, a nice setup for a horse, nice this that. But nobody wants to live next to a low-income project. And look at it, we have seven houses down the side, going down the back of my house, like looking back, back of Walmart. Big fence and all these houses, looks like the back of Walmart. It's done, you know? So when I die, because I can't go anywhere now, when we die and the children get it, they'll just have to sell it and take the loss. And this is from lack, lack of knowledge for not knowing what a scam the 40B is. I mean, how, what's the percentage on the 40B when they have their, apply for it, you know, the lottery or whatever, on town people that move in there? Is it open to the whole state?
So we can request a percentage of local preference?
Yeah.
And we typically do, but you can't exclude everyone else.
Okay, so, so this is never going to get anywhere. So you could have one person from the town going in there and maybe the other two houses going to people from out of town, right? And one of those three houses is only taking up the other nine, so you supposedly have two being added to the, to the affordables, but only, probably only one affordable going to a local. So you're devaluing all the property around it for one local family. It just, it doesn't make sense. And then after I put my house up for sale and can't sell it because everybody's telling me, I don't want it, it's useless, the town goes up on my taxes. And then the insurance company gets it and says, now that you got a project beside you, you've got a attractive nuisance having a horse there, something can happen. So my insurance goes up, so now I'm paying an extra $1,000 to be where I don't want to be and can't do a god, can't do a thing about it. So this is, you know, it's a scam. It's a scam, and if you, if it's known, anybody that hears that, if you've got land around you, buy it because otherwise you're going to get jammed. We, the Cape Cod Commission came out before this started, and their recommendation was no 40Bs north of Brook Hill. Where were they all built, north of Brook Hill? You have how many going in now, north of Brook Hill? Have three, four more up right now for it, I bet you. So that's not stopping it. Why, why be in the commission if you're not going to listen to them? But that's, oh, and then when the houses are sold, there's still conditions to go with them. So a family moves in, June 9th, a 10 by si, they, in the conditions, no added structures, nothing else, a big shed, maybe 10 by 16, is moved in. And it's still there, nothing's been done about it. I've called a number of times, put in the complaints. They don't plan on taking it out. And I haven't heard about anything being legally done about it or up to, I don't know, what, where's it at? Has there been anything pushed on it, you know?
The zoning enforcement officer was in touch with the homeowner, and they're expecting them to file for an amendment.
So that, so.
I think we're supposed to engage in give and take. I have sympathy for them, but the way I understand the rules are, this is for an open comment, and we're not supposed to go back and forth. We all might have different opinions.
That's, that's true, Jerry.
All due respect, sir, just.
The, the board has.
But we know you're up for 40B anyway, Jerry. We know that, to begin with, from the conversations.
Sir?
I had with you before.
I, I wanted to thank you for coming tonight, coming down here and making your comments. I just, I want to, I just want to make one thing clear. This public comment period, we're really not supposed to go back and forth and engage.
Okay, I, I do want to impress that all the people on the zoning board did their job. You got the conditions in there. It's lack of enforcement, that's the problem with the whole thing.
Right, and as a, as a general idea, I agree with you. This board has struggled with the lack of enforcement with our conditions. It's, it's an issue we've struggled with, especially recently, and I'm just talking broadly with projects as a whole.
I tried to talk to the town manager at a Zoom meeting, he didn't put it up. They asked, I requested the letter be read by the town manager. There was a complaint with it about the gas company starting at six o'clock in the morning instead of eight o'clock on a Saturday. He didn't think that was a big deal. He saw, I think, he thinks they're starting too early, but he refused to read the letter. And from what I had understood, that a request to read a letter in an open meeting is supposed to be done. So this is, you know, it's right from the top all the way down.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment tonight? All right, seeing none. Moving on to our continuations, scheduled for 6:30. Up first, we do have application 69-21, Falmouth Housing Corporation and Affirmative Investments, Inc., 763 Main Street and 24 Scranton Ave. in Falmouth, requesting comprehensive permit to raise the existing building and construct 48 affordable rental apartments with retail space on the first floor and age restricted for 62 plus.
Chairman, for the record, I have a conflict, this I'll be recusing and ask the minutes reflect that.
Thank you, James. All right, so that would leave the four of us for the moment.
Scott could do Mullen Rule if he only misses this one meeting for the file.
All right.
I assume, Mr. Chairman, there's been, so there's been some additions to the file. We'll hear from, I assume, Mr. McGrath tonight and also the peer engineer on those plans. But I just want to read in the information regarding the flow neutral bylaw, because we did get information on that. First, from, from Amy Lowell, wastewater superintendent. This is dated September 21st, this is to the board of selectmen with a copy to us. Amy states, I received referral under the flow neutral bylaw regarding proposed redevelopment of the above two lots. The proposed redevelopment is within an existing sewer service area and the parcels abut an existing gravity sewer main on Scranton Avenue. A letter from Michael McGrath dated June 25th, 2021, was included in the zoning board of appeals package regarding this development. The letter states that the Title V design flow for the previous uses on the parcelable, parcels, which was a bank with floor area of 3,875 square feet in a 29-room motel, was 291 plus 3,190, which equals 3,481 gallons per day. This letter also states that the Title V design flow for the proposed uses on the, on these parcels, which is 2,450 square feet of commercial space and a 40B development with 48 bedrooms would be 184 plus 5,280, that equals a 5,464 gallons per day, which is an increase in 1,983 gallons per day. Because this is more than a 10% increase in Title V design flow, this redevelopment requires a flow neutral bylaw variance. Flow neutral bylaw variance was granted in June of 2018 for a previously proposed project on this site. That flow allocation was deleted from the wastewater system capacity calculations when that project was withdrawn. Precondition for the select board, or the ZBA, in the case of a 40B project, to grant a variance to the flow constraints of the flow neutral bylaw is that sufficient capacity exists as determined by the wastewater superintendent. The following is a summary of the wastewater system capacity, which is limited by the groundwater discharge permit for the wastewater treatment facility. The permitted average annual discharge flow of gallons per day is 710,000. Projected average annual flow with variances granted to date, 567,000, and a projected average annual flow as percent of permitted flow, 79.8%. In the last flow neutral bylaw memo I issued, I rounded this to the nearest percent, for example, 80%. In order to show the effect of flows that are less than 1% of current flow, I will in the future round to the nearest tenth of a percent. This project is granted a variance, if granted a variance, is estimated to bring the total projected average annual flow from the wastewater system to 80.3% of permitted average annual flow. Therefore, sufficient sewer system capacity currently exists to accommodate the prod, the projected additional flow from this property. When the actual average annual flow to the wastewater, wastewater treatment facility reaches 80% of permitted flow, which is expected to occur in the next year or two when town's activity returns to pre-COVID levels, and when all the project's granted variances have been completed, the wastewater treatment facility's discharge permit requires the town to provide a plan to the Department of Environmental Protection for how the town will continue to meet its permit requirements. The targeted watershed management plan for Great Pond, currently in preparation, will include a plan for expanded discharge capacity. If that plan is not approved or implemented as envisioned, redevelopment in sewer areas could be limited by sewer system discharge capacity. Then dated October 7th, 2021, and this is coming from Julian Suso, town manager. Dear Mr. Stockman, this letter serves as a referral from the select board for the comprehensive permit application filed by the Falmouth Housing Corporation, a private nonprofit for a 48-unit senior housing rental project for individuals aged 62-plus, located at the site of the former bank building at 763 Main Street and 24 Scranton Ave. in Falmouth, Mass. This referral addresses the flow neutral bylaw and the application generally. The select board did not hold a flow neutral bylaw hearing to consider a variance for the proposed project because the authority to make this determination rests with the zoning board of appeals pursuant to Massachusetts general law's 40B. However, the select board has considered the matter and offers this referral for consideration of the zoning board of appeals. The attached memo from wastewater superintendent Amy Lowell states that the sufficient sewer system capacity currently exists to accommodate the projected additional flow from the property. The estimated Title V flow for the proposed housing is 5,464 gallons per day. With the addition of the flow for this project, the projected average annual flow of wastewater system, inclusive of flow neutral bylaw variance is granted to date, will increase from 79.8% to 80.3% of permitted system capacity. The health agent has advised that a septic system for 48 bedrooms can be sited on the parcel. The select board thus finds that the proposed project is eligible for a variance under section 180-55 of the town code. The select board further notes that affordable housing is one of the priority areas for waivers under the guidelines this board has adopted for evaluation of flow neutral bylaw variance applications. The select board has been briefed on the merits of this affordable rental, rental housing by the applicant and town staff. It is our view that this is an ideal location for affordable rental housing for individuals aged 62-plus. The local comprehensive plan calls for housing for all with greater infill residential density where appropriate, primarily through redevelopment. The subject property is a redevelopment of the former Cape Cod Five Bank located downtown directly across from the senior center and in close proximity to the fire department headquarters and the police station. It is less than a mile from a grocery store, pharmacy, library, beach, and marine park, and is accessible to public transportation. The property is located within a sewer service area. The zoning for the property is business redevelopment along Main Street and Business 2 on Scranton Ave. The business redevelopment district encourages mixed use and developer include retail space on the first floor. All 48 units will be deed restricted affordable. The income range for the units is broken down by category as follows, under AMI area median income. One studio, 30% AMI, one at 50% AMI, one at 60% AMI, for a total of three. On the one-bedroom units, eight at 30%, eight at 50%, and 29 at 60%, which equals 45 of the one-bedrooms. The town's housing needs is identified in the 2018 housing production plan. Calls for 85% of new affordable units to be rental and 15% to be home ownership. The Falmouth HPP identifies as unmet need of 469 rental units for individuals over the age of 61 specifically. This project houses, this project housing addresses a particular acute need for renters at 30% to 60% of area median income. The town has generated very few units at this lower end of the income scale in recent years. The developer, Falmouth Housing Corporation, has a track record of constructing quality rental housing, and perhaps more importantly, managing the property in a manner that assures they remain an asset to the community over the long term. The recent escalation of real estate prices on Cape Cod has exacerbated what was already acute need for housing that is affordable to individuals and families at and below area median income. Increasing the production of deed restricted affordable housing is a top priority for the select board. For all of these reasons, the select board supports the application submitted, and we respectfully encourage the zoning board of appeals to approve the comprehensive permit without any reduction to the number of units. Sincerely, Julian M. Suso, town manager. And this was per vote of the select board on September 27th, 2021. And they did a, they attached the memo that I read earlier from Amy Lowell and also CC Falmouth Housing Corporation and the select board.
All right, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, we have Attorney Moynihan. Attorney Moynihan, before we let you go underway.
Oh, no!
He came back in. Jerry, too slow. All right, he's still with us.
Maybe he's figured it out.
It's working, so it's green.
New reason for appeal, attacked by a bird.
Always thinks it's green.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. My apologies, Attorney Moynihan, before I let you start, there are four of us, so Jerry will be participating. As you know, with under 40B, four members is fine, simple majority is fine for a vote in the event that we go beyond tonight. I know Scott Peterson's not here tonight. At his own election, he could review the minutes in the video and submit an application of the town clerk under the Mullen Rule to, to be back on and participate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So a lot of material's been filed since the last hearing. I, I wasn't planning on going through at all. I mean, I know the board is very good about reading things that come in. We did file a lengthy response to the peer review report. If anybody has not had a chance to review that, I'm happy to summarize it. Our intention tonight. Our intention tonight was to address the couple of points that had been raised at the last hearing. One was an architectural review to look at a certain point of the building for some redesign and also to look at adding in a pickup drop-off parking space. So that was, that's our plan. Cliff Bomer is here, the architect, and he can go through those architectural changes for you briefly. And then Mr. McGrath can show you that minor change to the site plan. And if there's anything else you'd like us to do or address, we'd be happy to do that.
Sounds good.
Hello, and thank you so much for hearing us tonight. And I will be brief. I'll start with the plans, even though that's not really where the significant changes are. But I think, I think they are of interest because they deal with the sustainability aspects of the building and as well as ease of maintenance for the building. It really makes a, makes a big difference in the long-term use of the building and a couple other accessibility changes that we made. So there are subtle changes in the plans. I wouldn't expect them to jump out, but I just want to point it out to add a little bit of color to this. We're looking both at the inside as well as the suggestions you made for the exterior and the appearance of the building. But a couple very subtle changes, but they're important to us and the team that you'll notice along the corridors of the buildings, we now have our, we've moved our MEP system so they can be serviced from the corridors so that residents don't have to be bothered by regular maintenance, which of course will make sure that, ensures that it happens at a good frequency. In the living room area of the building, we've added a fireplace. In that area, there'll be a very nice space for the residents to gather. The stairway, it looks a little bigger than it used to, and that's because we've been following the senior housing guidelines that have been issued by the state that recommend on stairways that are likely to be used a lot, and this is an open stair that connects the first and second levels. We changed the pitch on the stairs. So rather than being a kind of conventional seven-inch by 11-inch pitch that you see in most multifamily buildings, this is a softer pitch at six inches by 12 inches. So we think that will really encourage more use of the stair. Our accessible bathrooms, we've made them a bit bigger in all the areas that need to be accessible rather than having a five-foot turning radius circle. We've increased that to a five-foot-six turning radius. Mr. McGrath will talk about the parking, the loading area. You can see that we have changed parking schemes so that we have now a drop-off loading area, we think, in a place that's both very useful for the residential program in the building as well as the commercial area. And so very subtle changes, but things that we think will really help the building in a lot of important ways. Maybe this will advance it. Oh.
And if you use the cursor, Cliff, you can.
Oh, okay. Perfect. Oh, that's better. I won't need a point. So this is what you've seen previously in the, in our drawings, and I think the things that stood out to you were the kind of tower elements at the ends of the building. I think you know that we were working a lot with other buildings you're familiar with, specifically on Main Street, that also has some tower elements, but they had a rooftop piece that we thought was a really good suggestion. You also, we talked about the prominence of the corners, and there could be good locations for including architectural elements that would kind of speak to the public more broadly, which we have looked at. And finally, you asked us to look at some color variations because we showed you some very, very subdued color schemes, and we've come up with what we think is a, is a, an advanced scheme. Let me make sure I get it right. Okay, terrific. So this is the new unrendered elevations. You can see the changes we have made. I think probably the most important change is putting rooftops on those corner elements, which is, I think, specifically what you were asking us to look at. And we've introduced a large public-scale clock into, into one of the tower elements. It's going to be visible from both Scranton and from Main Street. It's actually quite large. It's a five-foot diameter clock that we're introducing into the, into that tower at the end. The only other changes that resulted in plan are up on the third level. Rather than having the centralized window, we, we introduced two smaller windows on either side of the clock to maintain the windows in the unit as, to make that as livable as it's been. Let me get to the colors. Yeah. So these are little, yeah, they're a little small. Sorry, I'm so bad at using other people's viewers.
Oops. It's not zooming. Why it's not zooming? Oh, no, I really lost it. Anybody else know how to?
I think on the bottom, there's a plus. Just my computer at home does that.
There we go. Oh, you're a genius. Thank you, Mr. Clower. All right. So control and then.
All right. Can we just roll down?
Yeah, you can scroll through. Sorry about that, Bill.
Well, as we all know, as we all know, different people's computer screens also render colors differently. But the idea was to introduce some richness in the colors down at the lower levels. There's still rather subtle shades. We actually do have physical samples that we brought with us if you'd like to see them for real, but we're looking at prefinished, cementitious products with not a huge range of colors, but we think some colors that are within the palette. There you go. Thanks, Tara. We wanted colors, you know, there is a lot of bright sunlight here, so we didn't want colors to be totally washed out. We wanted to have some colors that are richer, that would still be readable as colors even in brighter sunlight. I think the, the purpose that you folks flagged was good because it is a larger building, and by the use of colors, we are able to break up the massing of the building, or break up the length of the building through variation in the colors. The, for the shingles, we're looking at pretty conventional palette of shingles, kind of a lightish gray color for most of the shingle areas. But I think it's important that our goal is to build large-scale mockups once we, because you really can't see in this light or even in very small pieces exactly what it will look like. But when we get to the point of actually ordering our materials, we would do mockups of the color schemes so that, set up on the outdoors on the site so we could get a much better idea of exactly what it would look like. But in any case, we, we appreciated the comments that you did come up with. We think by using, introducing a little more richness in the colors, but still staying within subtle, subtle tones and subtle variations of the tones within the building, that the building could really read well from the street and fit in very well with a lot of the color schemes in existing nearby buildings. So I thank you for your suggestions. And with that, I guess I can ask Mr. McGrath to present his part, unless you have questions about the architectural elements.
Any questions about the architecture?
No, I think the changes are.
Thank you.
Thanks for, for the suggestions.
My name is Michael McGrath. I'm a registered engineer and a registered professional landscape. My firm worked on the site designs, and we received a, basically, peer review. And so, plus, I want to describe to you some of the changes that have occurred. One of the changes that, oops, computers and I don't get along. We, the board asked for what we have labeled as a drop-off and pickup zone, and it is immediately adjacent to the assessable, assessable spaces or two of the assessable spaces. The reason we picked it is that we have changed the grading so that this stretch of sidewalk is level, and then there's ramps up there. The idea is if they drop something, if they're going to deliver something, they could use a two-wheel jack for instance to, to basically regrade that. We also have changed a whole bunch of minor details on the site. And one of the changes that has been done, for instance, is we have made this stormwater system bigger. When we prepared this project, there is a retaining wall that's going to be located along this boundary and this boundary. And the site is within 200 feet of Falmouth and Harbor, but there's a hotel building, a road, and a park between here and, and Falmouth and Harbor. But there, in fact, this is a parking lot for the Island Commune Corporation in this location. So what happens is, this is what's called an isolated coastal bank, so we are filed with conservation. Because we are filed with conservation, we have to file out of the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards. The Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards require us to design a system that treats a storm that's 24 hours, one in 25 years, 24 hours, one in 50 years, and 24 hours, one in 100-year storms. We have to treat it, and, and one of the reasons this got bigger is the peer reviewer pointed out that he thought we should use a different Rawls value, and so I have revised the plan to show that. The bottom line is that I know that you're going to see comments that we haven't designed it in accordance with the town standards. The town standards is a 25-year storm, one hour. My point is if I design for one-in-100-year storm, it's obviously much, it's going to be a much different storm event. And if I design by the state standards that exceed the town standards, and this is an affordable housing project, it's sort of wasteful for me to reduplicate drainage calculations. So the bottom line is I believe that the site is completely and appropriately designed. There are other comments, most of them are minor, but I'd be happy to discuss any part of the referral that you'd like me to. I sort of hit the major ones. Any questions?
I had a question, two. One, what, if any, of the significant disagreements you have with the peer review? I mean, have.
No, I didn't have any.
So you're in.
No, we didn't have any disagreements.
Yeah, just.
We should hear from the peer review.
Oh, I didn't know there were, okay.
Yeah, and just generally to answer the comment, we, we did appreciate the, the review and the efficiency of it. Our, I think our response shows that everything's been addressed in the plan changes or can be addressed by the board through conditions. And there were a couple of additional waivers requested. I would submit to technical waivers, but we tried to tidy it all up for you so that it could either, was either changed, can be conditioned, or addressed in waivers. And the point being that some of this stuff is very, very technical. You know, with these 40B projects, it's very difficult to ask applicants to spend a lot of money at this stage on technical engineering drawings that would be required prior to a building permit. So usually, in a, in a case like this, if the board is inclined to grant the permit, then the developer can justify the investment in those additional professional fees. So that's why conditioning those technical matters prior to building permit is so important for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Shall we hear from our peer engineer then?
Yeah.
Thank you. For the record, Matt Cody from Beals &amp; Thomas, Registered Engineer in the State of Mass in the Commonwealth. We provided some initial comments to the board on October 14th and received a response just this past Tuesday, on October 19th, and have had a chance to review that, even though we haven't responded formally. As the applicant has indicated, for the most part, all those comments have been either adequately addressed, or there's still some minor outstanding, like kind of like as she explained, technical, kind of nitty-gritty aspects that could certainly be addressed prior to any construction, but wouldn't necessarily prohibit, you know, the board from granting the permit at this time. You know, there's no deal breakers there, or nothing that cannot be addressed. As the, as the applicants indicated, there were, you know, a couple more waivers requested as a result of the review, and regarding some of the stormwater aspects, there is some, there's still some questions that remain, but again, nothing that's like a deal breaker that would, you know, prevent the board from having a comfort level moving forward. I can certainly address any questions or clarifications you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Any questions from the board for our peer engineer? All right, not seeing any. Thank you. Attorney Moynihan, I'm not sure if you had anything else to present or if you wanted to turn it over to board questions. I didn't, I didn't know if there was anything specific for you from the board.
Nothing more that we intended to present. Happy to answer questions for you.
Sounds good. Jerry, any questions for Attorney Moynihan?
Not at this time.
Scott?
Well, it's surprising to know. Out of all the 40Bs, this is kind of the first.
And no questions for myself at the moment, so we'll turn it over to public comment if anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project. Anyone at all? Not seeing any. Back to the board, I suppose.
Also, I guess just brief discussion. So they, they did make the architectural changes, and I think it was a plus. They added the loading zone, which was one of, I know, one of the concerns that I had. We have heard from the peer engineer that there are some outstanding stuff, but it's all technical, we can condition. I haven't really heard anything that.
He's comfortable.
Yeah.
That being said, I'd make a motion to close.
All right.
I just want one question. I had not had a chance to review the detailed response, so I just, if the other board members are comfortable that once we close, we can go through and work out these minor technical issues. I mean, I prefer not to go to a continuation. I'd rather close, but I'm asking the rest of the board members if they feel comfortable.
Well, so in this case, the, the peer engineer is basically saying that, that as our peer engineer, he feels comfortable that anything left can be worked out prior to construction.
But I guess the question is, are the three, I apologize, having to see, are you three comfortable that we can work it out and condition? Are we going to put conditions on tonight or tomorrow? We're going to close the hearing, I mean, next week, going to close the hearing?
So, so that, I guess if we were considering closing it, the best thing would be to close it, and then if we were going to a decision, we would have the administrator start the draft of the decision so we know that all the conditions are in, that would come back to us.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And then we could review, and then if we had any questions at that time.
Time is of the essence, so.
I think the peer can review any conditions we have.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Submit any of the technical.
Okay. Now, that's what he's here for. Yeah, okay.
And there is a little town aspect to this. The town has been looking at the traffic in the area. They do have future plans. They are engaging in traffic specialists. in the area. They do have future plans. They are engaging in traffic specialists to look at this, so there may be some comments from that traffic person. So there may be some tweaks to the plan in the future potentially, but I don't think that that would hold up this prospect.
But it's my understanding that the town tweaks, how in the town, change in the intersection, things like that, it's not on the 40B, unless they're asking for a different driveway location off of Main Street.
I think the only thing that they potentially considered was curb cuts.
Okay.
But, you know, I think that's something that sort of can be negotiated with the town if that's a consideration.
May I address that? We would anticipate, because the board typically has a condition, that we have to meet all requirements of engineering prior to application for a building permit, so that there would be curb cut review at that time. Given the timing, that could be, you know, I think Mr. McConner, he had said 30 days, but, which is fine. So it should all work out as far as their review of it. If there are minor adjustments that they're need, then we would come back and either Noreen could approve them administratively, or we'd be back at the board for you to look at them, which is okay.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. All right.
We have a motion to close the hearing.
Any other discussion from the board before we close?
I just want to make a comment. This is exactly what everybody's asking for. I mean, this fits the bill, it's well-drawn, it's well-presented, everything's in line. The peer review engineer likes it. There's no deal breakers. I don't know what we're-
I don't think we've ever seen an application like this where we've had a second meeting and, I mean, they've worked everything out, so.
No, conservation has not closed. I think it's continued with conservation, but I don't think that that necessarily impacts the work that the zoning board is doing.
Right.
No, we could just add a condition that they follow anything with conservation.
Attorney Moynihan, is that your understanding?
Yes. They wanted to review the peer review report, and so that hearing was continued until November 4th, but that is a separate permit under the state act. It shouldn't prevent this board from moving forward. If the board is inclined, they can certainly add a condition to the comprehensive permit that an order of conditions under the State Wetlands Act would be issued, which is what was done in the Little Pond Place proceeding.
Grab it, Laura. Just put it in your pocket.
So, should have brought my cat. Anyway, so, so the board, if you, you know, wanted to, could condition this for the order of conditions. And I had another thought, and I lost it there, but anyway, we expect that, you know, review should proceed on the 4th of November with Concom.
Mr. Chairman, and I think to follow up on what I was saying before, this is a prime example of how easy the process can be if it's well-done, well-thought-through, and presented well.
Well, and I'd like to just say that Holmes McGrath, Mike McGrath and his staff, I mean, these guys really worked really, really hard. And, you know, through the weekend, I mean, they really deserve a lot of credit for addressing, you know, all of this technical stuff in such an efficient manner, and yeah, really, kudos to them.
You also see a track record here, which is a huge plus.
Absolutely.
You know, we've approved other projects, you've seen how they're run, how they're managed.
Absolutely.
So if Scott has a motion to close on the floor, I will second.
All right. Scott, you have a motion to close, right?
Yep.
All right, motion closed made by Scott, seconded by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken.
So then I would make a motion to have the administrator draft a positive approval with conditions that we could review, whatever you think would next.
And we have complete list of waivers, right? I didn't hear anybody say they're adding new waivers.
Nope, the only new waivers were the technical, but we have them.
All right, so do we want to help her out with the findings and conditions, or?
What are we looking at date-wise, you think?
Yeah, I was just sort of toggling between two days.
We're looking for a date, and then you need a second, so I'll give the second if the date's done.
And I'd like to just offer, I'm happy to draft findings and conditions and submit them, if that would assist Noreen, because it is a lot of work and we have asked a lot-
That was part of the presentation. You had a list of, that was a good guideline.
Had a list of waivers, but the findings and conditions can be, you know, eight pages, so if she would like my help, I'd be happy to do that. And I know everybody's worked hard to move this quickly, so.
I know, in the past-
I'll defer to Noreen for that.
Yeah, so I think we'd be looking at November 18. I mean, that was the date we were looking at, if we need to continue the hearing, anyway.
We have no time constraints or anything?
Well, so you have 40 days.
I mean, for them.
Well, they have-
Does the board have any objection to Attorney Moynihan assisting? We've done it in the past. Some people like it, some people don't like it. I think it helps when we're under a crunch and we know the experience of the attorney.
I'll defer to Noreen for that.
We have a pretty good system down now, I think, so, you know, but we'll certainly share the draft and we'll get input from peer engineers, et cetera, so.
Okay. All right, so Bob, you made the motion. Scott, seconded it. And do we want to help out Noreen with the findings and conditions?
Well, I mean, you know, list the information from the housing production plan. The project is for a 62-plus senior, which is an acute need for the town.
Hundred percent favorable.
The, yeah, the AMI aspects, the design aspect of the building. I think you should put in the findings, too, that they took the comments that the board had, they incorporated into the design.
It absolutely fits the town's housing plan with what's needed right there with respect to amenities and walking.
Location.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think we found, we received any objections from anybody.
We had one inquiry, but-
Oh, yeah, it was an inquiry.
And it wasn't an objection that may be stated.
And we could take care of that, maybe in a condition. I think it was about parking in the laundromat area, something like that. Put my sign up.
I know the select board or the town manager's recommendation is going to be included in the-
Will be included in the file.
List of documents, but do we want to make any specific findings about that?
You can list about the accessibility changes that they made along with the-
There was a finding that-
Architecturals.
The maintenance staff is usually housed across the street, anyway, so if that's part of the findings, so the staff shares that parking across the street, so that doesn't inhibit-
You should make a finding of the track record of the management team. Maybe want to list some of the other projects they've done that brought housing into the town.
Anything else for findings for now?
I'm sure there can be adjustments.
No, most of them are going to be, I mean, I don't think it's anything super specific. Most of them, you know, go through the waivers, we'll, you know, make the findings on the flow-neutral bylaw. You have to put a statement in there that the board has made the decision on that, based on the waste water.
The wastewater treatment plant has adequate capacity, it's certified by the wastewater superintendent.
Right.
I mean, it's, they're asking for a variance from that, and we're granting the variance.
Yeah, so you have to put that in that we're granting the variance as the permitting board.
All right. Move on to conditions, or?
So, you know, especially the technical and the engineering, we should probably put in construction hours. Same thing we do about police details and stuff where it's a main road.
Right, there should be plenty of room out back, the stage, the stage stuff.
Everything remains on-site. That's a tight area.
And all the normal erosion sediment controls and all the-
I think the one inquiry from the businessman that was next door, and I don't think anybody objected, was to have some signage up on respecting the parking area.
You could put a finding there that they did make comments regarding the signage, that they've just done some as to be representational, but they would come as a, come back to us with something final once they get closer to-
And that could be something they worked out themselves.
Yeah, I think it's, no parking's no parking.
Anything else to guide Noreen in the process?
No, I think she, pretty much in the file, everything's pretty much, what, 485 pages of-
And it's just going to sharpen itself as you go, and you don't authorize overtime.
All right, so that was a motion by Bob, seconded by Scott, directing Noreen to draft a positive decision regarding this project, and also a continuation to review to November 18. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Attorney Moynihan, thank you to you and your team tonight.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Did I say something?
No.
We did not note inadequacies with the computer.
I just wanted to say that that's not a rare and endangered bird.
It's a fish.
That's all I wanted to say.
I think it's a birage.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The peer reviews were paying off, though. Got some details that we never would have got to. Yeah, James, you want to take a five-minute break, then?
Yeah.
Sorry, everyone, we're going to take a five-minute break, and we'll be right back. All right, we are back, starting up with our new hearings. Up first, we have application 74-21, Falmouth Boatyard LLC, 550 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a building to build boats.
So, application number 74-21, Falmouth Boatyard LLC, 18 St. Mary's Street, Newton, Mass, applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3 and 240-109B of the Code of Falmouth, to construct a building to build boats on subject property known as 550 East Falmouth Highway, East Falmouth Pass. For furrows. From the planning board. Okay, this is, wait a second. Oh, no, this is from engineering. It also went to the planning board. They had some deferred comments. The submitted stormwater calculation is not conformed to town standards. No stormwater calculations conform to town standards have been submitted. We defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If town's stormwater calculus work required, then there's a notation here that new calculations were provided for a new proposed leaching system for the driveway. These do not show that the systems mitigate the town design storm. See planning review for details. No town standard calculation provided for the rear stormwater system. We defer to the Board of Appeals if the calculation should be revised and resubmitted, and if the town standard calculation should be provided for the rear stormwater system. And number six, we defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals if the special permit for unpaid parking is granted. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or rights of way. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this product shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions documented on the Engineering Division's webpage. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering shall be replaced with Zoning Board of Appeals, would be the permitting authority for the project. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. That's the same one, soil erosion and sediment controls. We request the following condition be included. The applicant shall see the Engineering Division for address assignment for the new building prior to applying for a building permit. And also, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the building per subsection 99-1. A fixing of legible numbers required. Time limit for compliance. We do have a notation here from planning, that they are before Planning Board on Tuesday, not for a decision yet, and the engineer was looking at the drainage calculations. That's just an update on planning. Uh, again, engineering for us. The application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. East Falmouth Highway is a state right of way in this area. Any alterations within the right of way require permission from Mass DOT. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or rights of way. The submitted stormwater calculations do not conform to town standards. One of the two accessible parking spaces should be van accessible. Uh, we defer to the zoning board of appeals again if the special permit for unpaid parking is granted. There are some addresses not in our database for this site. See planning referral for further information. Addresses should be cleared up with the applicant files for building permit. And then again, they recommend the soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions with us as the permitting authority. Uh, more information from the planning board that they're still working on. Uh, water department. The water services in Maine are on the plans as required. The proposed main extension includes work within Mass DOT layout, which the Falmouth Water Department would not perform but require a license contracted to do under Falmouth Water Department supervision. The preferred alternative is for the extension to come from Sin Rock Circle, where the Falmouth Water Department would perform the work, avoid cutting into the layout in looping piers way. Falmouth Water Department would apply for the main extension either way, including materials installation, inspection, and final approval of as-built requirements. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. Uh, from health department, it says septic system proposed is suitable for prop, for proposed use on the property. It does say how is proper industrial waste collection or disposal being accomplished, for example, paints, resins, and solvents that will need to be addressed prior to permitting. And again, from the planning board, just letting them know that it's going before them. Yeah, we don't have, and we don't have any letters submitted either.
All right. And for the applicant?
My name is Mike McGrath. Uh, I'd like to. I'm terrible with these things. Where is the, uh, I sent over colored drawings.
No worries. And before you start, Mr. McGrath, uh, James has returned, so you have a full contingent here and we'll be appointing Jerry as a voting number.
I sent them over to you. Oh, cuck. I'm sorry. I didn't bring him. All right.
We have the hard copies in front of us.
You have hard copies in front of us. And what I'd like to do is I'll describe quickly the changes. Uh, as far as the building is concerned itself, uh, in the front of the building, we now show a holding tank for the, uh, hazardous waste. In that, uh, at boatyards, they basically have a collection system so that all the hazardous waste that might be generated by washing the boats down, et cetera, is collected and it's pumped out. Uh, there's an alarm on the system. It's pumped out as necessary and taken to the treatment plant. It's what we've done at Falmouth Marine, at Phylliscope Marina, and other places. The second thing we did is we made sure that the handicap space was wide enough to, um, to serve. The, uh, as far as the access road, we were asked to basically widen the road. And what we did is we prepared and we submitted to you what's called a plan and profile, which is the standard method that the town uses when you construct roads in subdivisions. So, the plan and profile shows you how the road is going to be widened to twenty feet, uh, in, in three different areas. The town also asked us to basically design drainage for that. So, when we designed the drainage for that, we put it at the end of the existing pavement because there is sufficient space to put it there. And then we show that there is leaching structures placed, uh, basically inside the area that's going to be the industrial boatyard. And we moved the water mains over, uh, uh, enough so that it's proper clearance from the future, from the drainage systems that are being constructed. And it also, we also added the septic system and everything now fits according to the code. And you were given a plan stamped by me that shows all that. On the original set of plans, I labeled that there were three dwellings. It turns out that the third structure up is a stable. And I apologize for that, but the revised plan sure correctly labeled as a stable. We actually added house numbers to these structures so that every, so, because they didn't have house numbers before, they have house numbers now. And, uh, the water, uh, the, I know the engineering department, um, approved the house numbers that were, uh, given. I also provided you with drainage structures. Now, what we have here is the boatyard itself is fronts on a coastal bank that is, um, the flood plain just touches it. And since, and it's also within the riverfront area of Horns River and the, and the Crambury Bog. So, under Massachusetts laws, we have to design the parking in accordance with the Massachusetts stormwater management. So, the drainage system, and I testified about this before, the drainage system that serves the gravel parking lot has been designed in accordance with the state standards. It's different than the town standards, but there's a twenty-five hour, well, I'm sorry, one in twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm, a one in fifty year twenty-four hour storm, and a one in one hundred year storm. It is, it's different than the town standard, but if we design for one in one hundred year storm, we should easily satisfy the twenty-five year storm. I understand what he's saying is that the calculations don't meet it, but I would ask you to accept that the, that if I design a system to store a one in one hundred year storm, it should easily accommodate a one in twenty-five year storm. And it just seems like we should be changing the town standard to agree with the state standard because the town standard, I'm sorry, the state standard actually calls for the, for the system to be designed to remove total suspended solids. And then there is treatment, um, in, in the texture of the bottom. Uh, so, the bottom line is that, in my mind, the Massachusetts, um, Stormwater Management Plan, uh, program is better. Now, they did point out that, um, they, the town has their own erosion control plan. So, I added to the plan a stockpile area on the site. And I also added on the plan a place for concrete trucks to wash out. And as I said, I've given you the plan and profiles for the, um, the new access and widening on that. In this case, I did design that system in accordance with the town standards. So, that system shows that the road is being widened. I've given you calculations according to the town standard for the widened plan and profile. So, um, uh, I think that we, um, have discussed almost all of the changes that have been occurred to date. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have concerning the process.
Sounds good. Let's see if there's any questions. Uh, Jerry, anything?
I, I think you're going to say you didn't. Did you get anything from the town engineer to say he agrees the state standards are stricter than the towns?
No, he keeps repeating that I have to file a one-hour, twenty-five-year storm.
So, it's a, okay, it's a file, okay, all right, it's a, all right, I think I know the argument.
Anything else, Jerry?
No.
All right, James?
Can you talk to me just a little bit more about fire suppression, what's going to be planned? You've got a lot of volatile substances with boatbuilding.
What the plan shows is that there's a water main for consumption, and then there's a larger water main, I'm sorry, water pipe that's proposed for fire protection. Every, um, as I said, when I did the work for, um, several of the marinas, et cetera, they've always put in, uh, fire protection. We show a six-inch fire protection pipe and a two-inch water service. These buildings should be sprinkled because, for instance, the fiberglass boats do burn. And so, there was a fire several years ago, uh, and while I've been working in this town, of a boat catching fire at a marina. So, it is a, it is a requirement of the fire code that there be sprinklers in this building.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Mr. McGrath, you had mentioned, uh, a collection unit for the, for the waste that's, uh, been sprayed off the boats. We believe that there's supposed to be, um, construction of boats inside as well, right?
Yes, there, there has to be.
What happens to the overages from the construction of fiberglass and the resins and all of that? Is there a containment area? Is there a requirement for one?
The only.
For disposal?
There has to be dumpsters on site. What I was focusing on was that the, that I have to show, um, a place to collect the wash water that would occur.
I, I understand. I'm just, I'm asking, are you aware of any requirements that you have to, uh, place the hazmat, uh, materials?
No, I'm not.
Production of boats and any special disposals.
I know that most marinas have two different dumpsters, but I think it's cardboard and everything else, so I don't, I'm not aware of a requirement.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you, Mr. James. Thank you.
Paul?
Uh, so, I, I did ask you for a waiver. So, so why, uh, why the gravel versus asphalt? Why going for a gravel surface versus doing an asphalt surface?
Well, the bottom line is that the, uh, the petuminous concrete is very expensive. And, uh, the bottom line is that, um, he did ask for the waiver. The, the waiver, uh, I think the attorney ought to speak to this because.
Oh, sure. I, I don't, it could be the attorney.
And the other thing you asked me about was whether or not there should be de-nitification. And I filed a written letter describing how far it is from the open water. And, uh, in two thousand fourteen, I wrote in a letter opinion that said there was attenuation of dissolved nitrogen from septic systems. And in two thousand sixteen, a, at the, uh, down in the Chesapeake, there's a peer-reviewed paper that says in archeology that the total nitrogen should drop at about two hundred meters to below, to the concentration that is acceptable for salt water. So, I drew an approximate, um, path of the water. And, uh, the bottom line is that it, it's a long way, plus there's a Crambury Bog in between. So, I believe that there'll be very little effect of this septic system on the waters of Horns River. And I wrote that in an opinion.
So, so on the plans we have of the, of the, you know, metal warehouse building, and I know you have a septic system there, but we don't show it as having anything within the building, it just being all open. So, do you have a plan that actually shows what the breakdown is inside the building?
Uh, what I testified to you before was that it, the building commissioner said that we have to have a men's room and a ladies' room inside. So, I had thought that that was going to be, um, understood. There has to be a men's room and a women's room inside. And so, I, if they're not shown on those plans, it's a suitable condition to add that there has to be, um, um, men's and women's room inside.
And this may be a question, again, from Mr. Gullin versus you, but, um, and I know we went through some questions regarding definitions before. Um, so, you're playing basically under manufacturing. So, you'd be doing manufacturing just within a building, but there would be actually no boatyard, no boat storage?
All right. Um, maybe, I'll introduce it a little bit. I won't repeat anything.
Sure. No, no.
That we answered all the questions that the referrals asked already, so that's a good thing, right? And I, and I'm Paul Glenn. I'm here with Alex Khan tonight, and Mike's here too. You all know where it is, so I won't spend any time on that. What you're asking, we had a previous proposal before you for boat storage. And, um, the town planner thought that boat storage was not allowed there. Uh, and we came before you, and I don't know if they're, how people felt about it, actually, but you just said maybe you should just withdraw it and, um, file again and get a definitive, um, opinion from town council. And, and we didn't, but we didn't. So, you, you know, talking with Alex, Alex is a boat builder, you know, and he, he really is a boat builder. He, he's done it. He, he can show, we've already showed him to the planning board, um, the boats that he has built, and he plans on doing more of that. So, your, your question very.
I'm just trying to find out how, you know, you know what I mean, how it actually fits in so that we can fit into a definition so.
All right, so.
No exterior boat storage work, and it's basically just manufacturing within a.
Well, you, you know, I don't think the town planner or anybody is now saying that there would be no boat storage there with it. Uh, I think under manufacturing, um, easy, right? It's manufacturing, easy. I lost the page of it there. But it, it says right in that, um, public use. It says right in the manufacturing, fabricating. I'm going to be there in a second to answer your question.
So, it does, so it does, so it allows, it allows manufacturing, fabricating.
Yeah, EE, it's two fifty-four, it's fifty-four E.
I'm more concerned how you fit the other stuff, you know, into it. I, I'm not saying it's a bad project, it's just that from what we went through before, one of the discussions was before that maybe it is defined wrong and needs more definition in the bylaws, but because it wasn't, one of the options was to try to do an amendment to add boat storage in or something, and it's not in Marine District.
So, I, I have a lot of opinions about that that you probably don't want to hear.
No, I, listen, throw your opinions, I can.
The, the, um, and, but just, I'll, I'll read the section that the town planner read at the, um, at site plan review. It's two forty fifty-five B. Marinas, marinas isn't allowed use in, um, light industrial. Lending's was for potty boats not exceeding thirty-five feet. Renting of rowboats, sailboats, boat building, repairs, and storage. All, all three of them are, but, um, boat building, I, I don't know how you get to the opinion that boat building.
I think boat building's a lot. I mean, I think you can, I think you can manufacture and build the boats.
Yeah, to me, when I first applied, when we came back, I thought it would be under F, converting, fabricating, manufacturing. That, that's what he's doing. If you get to the last sentence of F, there are, the, the bylaw imposes certain restrictions on some manufacturing. How, I, I think it goes back to, we didn't want to have sweatshops by the sea when the, um, tech park was going in back in the seventies. So, we put in a, um, we, we put in a requirement that you had to have thirty-five square feet for each worker if you were going to have a, if you were going to have a manufacturing plant. But they add at the end, boatyards and buildings thereon are exempted from that provision. So, you know, they're kind of encouraging you to, to have, um.
But most of that has to do with the employee statute, doesn't it?
Uh, with what?
So, on the, I know this is one large parcel, so this is basically leasable, you're basically defining a new leasable space versus the other space that they already lease.
Yeah.
So, on the other property that is part of the property, but it's a separate entity during the leasing.
Part of the lot, it's a twenty-one-acre lot, I would tell you, yeah.
I don't know how to say this. Uh, do you have anything to show that boat storage was allowed on that property? That we might be able to see how that definition meets this one, since there appear, you know, when you go to the site visit anyways, you see boats. There's nowhere around it. There's, there's a lot of boat storage, but not on this.
Not on this site.
On the same site, but different edge of the parcel. So, is there something that allowed that to have boat storage that we could use to say that's why you are allowed boat storage here?
So, let me just, and the, the boat storage that exists a little bit to the east is on a different lot. It, it's not part of, it's not on this parcel. Even though this is a twenty-one-acre parcel. Even though this is a 21-acre parcel, most of it is empty up in the northern part of it, is public use.
So where you see the, like, so when I drove in, I drove in that main entrance that goes by whatever the auto, the little auto business, and you go back. And then as soon as you get to this lot and look out, it seemed like, is that auto business part, is that a different parcel?
It, the auto business is a separate parcel.
Separate parcel, not just a separate leasable section, it's a separate parcel.
Right, right, yeah.
So, so where is the, where is the actual border, where, like, the chain link fence, is that actually the border of the lot?
Well, he has it here.
So this is all leased. So these boats that are stored are stored on another portion of that, it's leased to a different entity.
But it's the same, it's the same parcel, but it's leased to a different entity.
Right. And there's a, there's boat storage in a couple places here. I don't know how or why.
No, and I understand. I'm just saying, if there's a way we can find out how that is allowed, it's not as much of a question of why you couldn't put boat storage here.
Can I ask the engineer a question here?
Yeah.
Michael, I understood that the, this is a different lot.
No.
It's part of the same lot.
It's part of the same lot. This is all one big lot, and the only thing that's been taken out is this parcel. But the bottom line is, it's a huge parcel.
There's a line right here.
Yes, but this goes around, it comes back. This is part of this same thing.
Well, so I misunderstood.
So that's what I'm trying to say. If we could find out how boat storage was allowed on that portion, maybe we can...
Well... My name's Alex Kahn. So I'll try and answer that question. So there's Rocky's Gym, and behind that, there's boat storage, and Bosons keeps its boats on there for 40, 50 years. So my wife's grandfather owned all that property, and he's had boat storage there for forever, since Edwards Boatyard and before. So that's, that's one parcel, and that is separate from this. The parcel that we're talking about, where the auto storage, so the auto, 28 Auto is, that is part of the same parcel. Behind 28 Auto is a segment that is run by, or leased by Little River Boatyard, and actually primarily, that's where they build their docks. And I do know that there are some, you know, boats on trailers and stuff like that, but that is, again, going back to, you know, 70s and 80s or before.
So I guess my question would be...
So there's nothing, I don't have anything in writing.
No, no, I know. So I guess my question would be for Mr. Glenn, is there a way to say that that wasn't allowed use?
Well, let me just say, so we have not got through Site Plan Review yet, so we're going to have to come back here. You don't...
Yeah, so my question would be, even if you get past Planning Board, if there's any way you can get us something that shows how that's allowed use?
Well, we will. And we'll get you a plan that is very easy to, it'll have big, big, bold lines between all the, so the lawyer knows what, I'm still questioning it.
No, and listen, I understand, because I saw the line, too, it just looks at it on the map, but it did say leasable area when we looked at it.
So we're all on the same page, anyway, what's on the, on the property, what's on this particular lot. So I understand the question. So we will do that to make things clearer at the next hearing. But to answer your question, you know, was kind of asked at the last hearing there, if, I think, when you read this, and it's so clear that boat storage is allowed, you wouldn't need a special permit. You wouldn't need anything, you just would do it. And I think that's...
Well, I read that, I just don't, you know, I would love it to be super clear, which would be great.
Yeah.
So you can submit something. My other question would be, so you've got, you've got 32 parking spaces there, so is that actually just for vehicles or...
Let me, let me say a few more things about the two special permits we're asking for. And that was one thing I wanted Mike to talk about, was how we figured out the, it's been, he's been very busy working weekends on another, and we haven't been able to talk much with that. But he, he knows the parking situation there with it, okay? The, so, so why are we, why are we here, is kind of what you're asking, right? You know, why are we here? What do we need? If this isn't allowed use, you'd just go Site Plan Review, and you wouldn't even have to come to that. But we're here because of the three dwellings. We find out that two of them are for people, one of them's for horses. But we're here because those are illegal, no, they're pre-existing, non-conforming residences. Residences are not allowed in the light industrial district. So because of that, that's why this board has jurisdiction. We want to change that. And before we close, I'll go through all the part of, before you close the hearing, of 216, and I think it'd be an easy case to show that this is a good use. You can't have more housing, so it doesn't, it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood to more housing that isn't allowed. And we're keeping the two housings. We're not getting rid of two affordable housing. And the other special permit we're looking for is for the alternate surface, right? And I mean, the, money is, is something, asphalt is there. I thought we'd have an argument there also that this is better for the environment. We just don't need the, we just don't need the asphalt through all that. It's not going to be a busy place. It's just that some people are going to be there building boats, and maybe we'll see what the law is and change the law, come back before the Planning Board to make it clear for boat storage in the future. If that happens, it still isn't a very dense use, it's just people would come in once in the winter and then come back again in the spring.
Yeah, the only reason they brought up the gravel was because when they were discussing, you know, hazardous materials or things that you work on these boats, it would just assume that a gravel surface is porous, and if something did happen there, it's absorbed through more than if it was in asphalt.
Well, he's only going to build boats in the building. He's not going to build boats outside of the building, you know? And, and there's parking there. So, I mean, I see. So there's two arguments for the environment, how you do it, but asphalt is a hazardous waste, you know, the rocks would be...
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the reason was.
Yeah, the gravel, the, the gravel would seem to be a better, it's just how the whole area is, really. You know, do you really want that much asphalt? That'd be a lot of asphalt. It's a 21-acre site, and so he controls the site. We've submitted all the material about that. He has a 99-year lease, two acres of the 21-acre site. And there'd still be a lot of asphalt to do that. So I think just the neighbors and people would prefer that. So those are our arguments for the two, for the two special permits. And Michael has a parking plan. I had asked Michael already if he would talk about that. Do you have any more questions from me, though, before?
Any other questions from the board?
Go ahead.
Thanks, Jerry. So we're talking, this is all one lot. How many businesses are being run off this one piece of property?
Just the, just the sale, the Route 28 auto sales is what it, that's what they call it, right? Route 2...
And the dock building isn't on that piece of property?
The what building?
The dock building that was described by Mr. Kahn. So that's two.
I don't think...
And then the boat building will be three?
So we have to, the boat building would be three if the...
On one, on one lot?
Yeah, 28 parks.
So the way this is depicted on the plan, it looks like it's cut off where your, where your, your boat building facility is.
My wife and I are leasing two acres of that 21, if that's what you're asking.
All right.
We can make that more clear.
I'm just trying to get clarification.
Yeah, no, you shouldn't. Yeah, I understand. We can make that more clear, whether or not that other business is on this particular parcel. We should make that clear for people.
Well, because, and the reason I ask that is because if you start doing different things with this section of one lot, how would it affect the other businesses that are being run there legally?
You know, the, we've been in the Planning Board once, they asked a lot of questions. We haven't been able to get back there again. But they, they took that into consideration, too, the bigger driveway, if it's going to be shared with the, with another, with another business. We don't think there's going to be a lot of activity in this new thing. It's a pretty big building, but it's not, it's, it's not going to be heavily used. It's more like just a one big shell. It's, we're not turning into an office building or multiple manufacturing sites there with it. So I think we can do a better job submitting a new plan here that'll show that, show that better.
It's color-coded.
Before, like, very color-coded, before we come, come back in there with it.
Anything else from the board? Or Jerry, did you have a question?
I couldn't find the site, but someone out there, maybe you guys remember, isn't there a section in zoning bylaws that said if something's been in use for 10 years and it's illegal, it's basically now allowed?
So uses are different than structures?
Yeah, that applies to structures.
So I don't know if this would apply with boat storage or anything like that.
So we'd be looking at use, so if it was a structure, but this is a use, so on a use, you wouldn't have a...
Okay, for the buildings, but that's...
Tonight, we're just asking for boat building, that's what he wants to do, and he really wants to get going on that. You know, it's possible we could be back here after we go through some other procedure for boat storage, but tonight, we're just dealing with, with boat building.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Bob, did you have?
No, I actually have a question, but it's for the administrator. Just because I've never dealt with a parcel, I'm sure these are common, where you've got one parcel and it's basically breaking up lease areas. So when an application goes in like this and there's an approval, who is the responsible party on enforcement? Is it the, is it the person that's leased it that's running the business, or is it the owner that owns the land?
So you're saying if there's a complaint, where does it go to?
Well, no, if you have something that, let's say an error is done and someone doesn't follow something in a, in a permit, who do you go to? Do you, is, who, what's the jurisdiction on something like this? Like, if they do, if they, let's say they had four or five businesses out there, and one or two weren't following whatever the regulations were, what happens in that case? Does it mean because a portion of the parcel may not be in compliance that...
So it would be probably both parties. It would be whoever is, you know, if there's a violation of a permit on part of the property, but it would also go to the owner, because it's ultimately, the owner has the control.
But the landlord is also the owner.
Right. But the person or party leasing the space might not be...
They're not the exact entity, they're really not. The trust that owns the land has multiple beneficiaries there, and the lessee has one person, that's the entity there with it there. So they're really different. The lease puts responsibility on the tenant, but I, I'm sure something goes wrong, you notify everybody and do the enforcement audit, right?
So again, to the administrator, so where this parcel is before us because of the residential structures, that's why they're here. So was the, were the, are there other special permits on the property?
Yes.
And with those, would we need any information for those special permits at all for this or no?
I mean, it could be a consideration by the board. So you could look at if there's other special permits on that same property.
I just wanted, just to see if there were any, you know, boards put conditions and different things, just if we needed something.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Mr. McGrath?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You asked me how I calculated the parking requirements. And there's 9,960 square feet of industrial space, and your zoning bylaw requires that there be one space, one parking space for every 300 square feet. So there's 34 spaces, and we show two to be handicapped. The ones that are handicapped are paved, I want to make sure you understood that. So, and then I was wrong, the parcel, if you, I don't know if you have this in front of you, the cover sheet, it turns out that the adjoining piece is the same owner, but it's, it is a different lot. But no matter what, if you look at the aerial photographs that are on your town site, you can see that there's boat storage there. And I couldn't find any special permits recorded at the registry or anything on this site, so, but I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a simple engineer. Well, just an engineer.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Good Sam boy.
All right, on to a public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application tonight? Seeing none, back to the board.
So just a comment in general, this is, according to the file in front of the planning, and they did have issues with a previous application for the similar, though this is different.
Right.
So we really should see actual decision on planning...
Yeah, we should.
Before we close and make a decision.
I need a clear site plan review before.
Yeah, just to see what it is. If we're, if we do continue, we may want, like you said, additional information. So it might, it might be nice to see the, an actual outline of the actual whole parcel, details of the interior of the metal building, so we know if there's any kind of a breakdown use. And if there are any other special permits that are on the property or applicable as a, as in a budding lot, we may want to just look at those, just to see what kind of conditions were on those. And if we're looking for dates, if we decide to continue, the next available date would be December 2nd. They wouldn't be finished with, with Planning Board review for our next date.
Attorney General Glenn, are you available December 2nd? Apologies for pushing you out that far.
December 2nd? Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's the earliest one we have right now.
Our schedule's pretty busy and clearing the site plan review.
You're meeting every, how many days you're meeting in, in December?
Looks like two.
December, the 2nd and the 16th.
The 2nd and the 16th. I, I can, yeah, I have something else, but there's nothing I'd rather do than be here.
I'm sure.
We're going to change, I can change that. No, we have to...
Unless you prefer the 16th.
It's going to be the same conflict, so I have time to prepare for the, for the 2nd with it, yeah.
All right. Would anyone like to make that motion, then?
So I'd make a motion to continue to December 2nd.
Motion's made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor? Aye. Passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
See you back here on December 2nd. Next, we have Application 77-21, Shob, 48, Bywater Court in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling.
So Application number 77-21, Robert M. Shob and Teresa Rivera Shob, 94 Stallion Trail Brewster, New York. Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C and 240-69E, Dakota Falmouth, to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming single-family dwelling, on subject property known as 48 Bywater Court. For referrals. The above referenced project is located within conservation jurisdiction and requires filing with the Conservation Commission. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Bywater Court is a public right of way in this area. Existing driveway will be removed and two new driveways are proposed. This work will require a driveway permit from the Engineering Division. There is not enough information shown on this plan to approve the driveways. Request of the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from Engineering Division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition in the special permit, which would read, "The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the Engineering Division. Prior to start of construction, the applicant shall complete the work as approved by the en...
by the Engineering Division in the driveway permit. Any connection or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property. It butters a public rights of way. It is not clear that the project will meet Section 24112B3. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells or stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. We recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for the residence per subsection 991, affixing of legible numbers, time limit for compliance. Where the site slopes down to the public right of way and the lot is small, erosion and sediment controls are necessary for the project to protect the town's downstream stormwater system in the abutting parcels. We recommend that the plan be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We require erosion controls across the front of the parcel as part of the driveway permit. However, the abutting parcels are outside of our jurisdiction. Therefore, we recommend the following condition be included in any approval with the Zoning Board of Appeals. The construction of the project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document, which can be found on the Engineering Division's page of the town's website. References to the Department of Public Works shall be replaced with Zoning Board of Appeals, would be the permitting authority for the project. From planning, this property is on the list of significant buildings and will need to file a waiver request application for the one-year demo delay bylaw with the Clerk's Office and the Historic Commission Office. Water department, the water main and service must be shown on the plan. Existing home has a one-inch service tapped into a six-inch main in Bywater Court. The new home must have its water meter inside the home and not in a pit. There was a lot comparison worksheet submitted. That is it.
And Attorney Clower, before I turn it over to you, Jerry will be appointed as a voting member, so you have five of us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen and Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth. And I'm here tonight representing the applicants, Robert and Teresa Schaub, the owners of 48 Bywater Court. I'm getting a reflection in the glass and I feel like I'm going to die bombed. I'm here tonight with Warren Reed of All About the House, who is the contractor on this particular project. We're here tonight seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling at the site. 48 Bywater Court is located just north of Surf Drive Beach, in a dense, largely regional, seasonal neighborhood. It's on a lot of, just about 7,600 square feet. It's in the RC zoning district and it is in an AE12 flood zone. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed on this site. I can't rotate the plan, apparently, because we need to upgrade the Adobe, but it's not letting me rotate, but we do have the plan here. Three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed with a footprint of 2,155 square feet. The house is currently non-conforming to the side yard setback to the west, being 9.1 feet where 10 is required. It's also non-conforming to lot coverage by structure, being 27.1, where 20 is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. The applicants have owned this property for 10 years now, and the house was built in 1953. It's in need of significant repair, both cosmetic and structural. However, given the location in the flood zone, the scope of those repairs requires compliance with the flood zone standards. They feel they have to raise the existing structure, R-A-Z-E, raise the existing structure and to rebuild a new home that would be compliant with those flood zone requirements. Pursuant to the building code in FEMA, the first floor of habitable space and all mechanicals must be at least one foot above the flood zone elevation, in this case, meaning no less than elevation 13, which is approximately seven feet above grade. So the applicant's proposing a new dwelling, and they're seeking to utilize that space that's being created by lifting the structure with a garage underneath. The proposed ridge height is 34 feet, 4 inches. And there is an additional bedroom, but because the property is served by sewer, there's allowed four bedrooms by right. The non-conforming side yard setback is eliminated. It's going from 9.1 feet to over 16, almost 17 feet. And the lot coverage by structure effectively remains the same. It's very slightly lower, but it's .1. The structure will comply with the flood zone standards. However, due to the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit under 243C and 69E. Under 243C, the threshold question is whether or not it is substantially more detrimental than what exists. This board's asked to consider whether or not it creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average homes in the neighborhood. In this case, there is no new non-conformity created. The non-conforming side yard setback is, is eliminated. And the, there is no effect on the existing non-conforming lot coverage. There's no effect on views and vistas from public ways, and it is consistent with the neighborhood. Driving through that neighborhood today, I was struck by how many of the houses in that neighborhood have expanded or elevated in order to meet those flood zone standards. In the RC zoning district, lot coverage by structure exceeding 20% requires a special permit under 24069E. Again, they were asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow on adjacent properties, the impacts on views and vistas from the public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Again, here, there's no impact on views and vistas from public ways. You're still going to be looking at the same stretch of homes that you'd be looking at. Though while this home is certainly larger, there's no significant effect to shadow. It's presently a dense, very clustered neighborhood where the homes do cast shadows on each other already, and that's going to remain the same. And there's no effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments as it is on sewer. As to the size and height of the structure, we did submit a lot comparison worksheet, looking at 38 properties within that 300-foot radius. There are a number of homes with greater floor areas and a number of homes with larger footprints as well. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions, both for the applicants and under public policy and a desire to have structures comply with flood zone standards. In observing the neighborhood, it's certainly not the first to comply, and I hope it's not the last. It will not create any new dimensional non-conformities. It will eliminate the existing non-conforming side yard setback, and I'm not aware of any adverse effects that would overbalance the benefits that we've outlined. I believe that this meets the requirements of 243C, 24069E, and 24216. I'd be happy to address any questions that the board might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. Board questions? Jerry, anything?
None at this time.
James?
What's the existing roof height of the current structure?
About 24 feet.
Kevin, regarding the bone, excuse me, the storage room, is that going to be heated?
I, well, it, there's no mechanicals, it's not habitable space. Can't have habitable space on the first floor, so no. Thank you.
Scott? Bob?
A quick one, just to the administrator. Do we, we don't have anything from, did I miss health?
They are on sewer.
So in that sewer, they've confirmed that that allows the four?
By right.
By right. Yeah, the only one that's a three-bedroom is New Silver.
All right, I just want to make sure we have, maybe they can just send us a note so we can add it in the, in the health. No, that's the other question.
Attorney Clower, if I missed it, my apologies, but the proposed height of the...
34 feet, 4 inches, 9 and 9/30 seconds? I was trying to do that math earlier.
Awfully particular. All right. Would be amenable to a height cert, of course?
Of course.
All right.
So I do have folk, so where are you in front of conservation? What's the status with that?
It's, it's an RDA in front of conservation only because it's within flood zone. That's been submitted, and we are in front of historic next week. With historic, it's not so much a question of whether it's a certificate of appropriateness. It's just a question of whether or not they'll impose the one, the 12-month demolition delay. I noted in correspondence with Ms. Stockman earlier this week that I believe the board can make their decision regardless of that, because your decision's good for three years. So even if they didn't impose the demolition delay, it would still be within the purview of that decision.
So in the, so in the lower levels of these, like where this one's all closed in, do they require, I mean, what's required? Breakway walls or flood vents?
It's not a flood, it's not a velocity zone. Velocity requires breakway walls under certain circumstances. There are flood vents that are required, is my, my understanding?
In the AE2, we wish seven feet to put flood vents right around. All right. Any follow-up questions from the board? All right, public comment. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project tonight? Not seeing any. The bird wants to chime in. Back to the board.
Motion closed. I mean, any reason? Are we going to wait for...
I don't know if we should wait for conservation.
Historical commission, which is probably...
Historical, we probably wouldn't have to wait for, because it's the, it's the demolition bylaw versus the appropriateness. It's just if you wanted to know from conservation or not.
I mean, we obviously have to comply with whatever decision conservation issues.
I think we can condition the ConCom issue.
You just swiped an insect out of the air.
I would think, yeah, I mean...
Oh, go on.
I'd be comfortable with conditioning, it's subject to ConCom conditions.
So usually, normally with the ConCom, so usually the engineering says that the ConCom would be the one that was the erosion and sediment. Why, why they saying us in this case?
All right, so engineering feels that if conservation has any jurisdiction over a project, that they would defer to conservation for any of the soil erosion and sediment control circumstances. But the problem is, is depending on how involved or not conservation is, they may not issue those requirements. So what I would suggest is that you use the soil erosion and sediment control that engineering has put together as a requirement.
Would that be unless superseded by ConCom?
Yes, but if conservation doesn't have any conditions, then they wouldn't be imposing that.
No, I'm just trying to see if we could move it along, because I don't know if there's any substantial issues with this. And I think, Bob, it probably comes from the wastewater to contend that the bedrooms are allowed.
Well, yeah, we just don't have it, so we just, they can just...
No, 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 it's not going to help, maybe, no, we...
No, it would come with wastewater. They usually just, they usually just chime in and send us a notice, just so you know that... And on the bulk calculations, Kevin, this is what, is this, this is the, is this the highest one on the street or...
No, I think there were 11 with higher gross floor areas. Yeah, if you look at the gross, gross building area, there's, I think there's 11 that have higher gross building areas on the street. It might be the highest lot coverage, 2693...
Yes, it is.
Lot coverage percentage might be the highest. But the, but the gross floor area, there's, there's 11 larger gross floor areas. And it's the highest lot coverage by about .3%.
And they are removing the shed, correct?
Yes.
All right, so where does that leave us? Anyone need to wait for ConCom or, or historical for that matter to weigh in or...
We could just condition on them.
Yeah. All right, so would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion closed. Second.
Motion closed made by James, second by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. And as for the board's pleasure, how would we like to proceed?
I guess approve with conditions.
Second.
And James? Findings?
We should make a finding that it's one of the, one of the single-level California ranches in that area, and that's why they have to go in front of historic for demolition delay by law that that neighborhood was originally set up for those ranches. They are doing the reconstruction to be in compliance with the FEMA guidelines.
They're tying into the sewer?
Yeah, it's a, the, the neighborhood is on the sewer system, where testimony was that you can have four bedrooms by right.
Project eliminates side setback non-conformity. Lot site coverage based on plans has been reduced by four feet.
Put in there that they, they are in the process, they haven't finished the process with conservation. So this decision will make a contingent upon conservation and historic?
Height of the existing structure was 24 feet. Proposed structure is 34, and I didn't quite...
34, 4, 34 feet, 4 inches, and 9/30 seconds.
There it is.
Close enough floor height, sir.
And they're amenable to a height certification at framing? Did we mention the lot comps yet?
Well, you could put in the information from the bulk calculations. They're actually the highest, the highest on lot coverage, but these homes are larger than them on footprint.
Anything else for findings?
Proposed plan is in keeping with the transition of the neighborhood.
Yeah, put that the, the neighborhood is defined as Bywater Court in Fresh River Lynn.
Any other findings?
Well, we're going to put in conditions, but should you put in the finding about with engineering that they did not think it would comply with?
Yeah, it's good to back that up with the, the finding.
I guess we can just put everything else in the conditions.
Sure.
So, so put the engineering comments in conditions with having to get a driveway permit, post any required bond.
They have to coordinate with the wastewater department. Not so much for the capacity, but when you break a pipe...
They're already tied in.
No, but when you, when you tie in the new thing, there's concerns about sediment getting in the broken pipe. I mean, that was brought up by the...
Jerry, hearing's closed.
So, so condition...
Well, I, I mean, I don't want to go back and reopen it, but I think, I was just trying to explain also for the, for the board members that the wastewater engineer...
Yeah, we're going to make...
...intended brought it up before in the previous permit, that when you break the pipe, you have to be careful. You don't get all sorts of sediment. So it's a requirement to get a wastewater modification.
Permit from, yeah.
So, so condition, so condition on the historic when you demo by law. Regarding the water department, if the meter is a pit meter, it's going to have to be relocated and those lines are going to have to be shown on the plan. Condition on the soil erosion and sediment control standards, which includes that demarcated limit of work. They also had mentioned something about the abutting properties. They need some extra protection. Condition on work hours. Condition on a height cert at framing, framing? Be submitted to the board.
Should be to the board and the building commission. Well, no, he's, he's the lynchpin on this.
Well, we're, we're conditioning on site, site, I mean, on a height cert. I just want to make sure that we also get a copy of it.
No, no, I, I'm not disagreeing.
We kept that before.
I think they also probably need to limit to no future shed absent a specific approval from the ZGIA.
Actually, pretty much no, no future...
Nothing.
Nothing.
Lot coverage.
May not add any...
No future, nothing.
Honey, a storage space now, though.
Anything else for conditions?
Put a, put a finding in that testimony was that they did not feel there would be any shadow effects on adjacent properties and that...
That's not what he said.
Yeah.
He said there wouldn't be any, any less than that's already there.
Yeah, no, that's what I was adding to it. And that, and that's because of where the adjacent properties...
Broadly covered in a changing neighborhood. Dynamic, that the building is keeping with a changing neighborhood.
As existing.
Could we, I know we've gone around in the past, but do we care about... Could we, I know we've gone around in the past, but do we care about air conditioning or generation, generator pads? That could add to lot coverage.
Mechanicals have to be at seven feet.
Oh, okay, good point. Thank you.
All right, last call. Anything else? All right, so that was a motion approved with conditions made by Bob and second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, up next we have application seventy-nine dash twenty-one. Michelle, one thirty-seven Shore Street in Falmouth requesting a special permit to allow a plunge pool, increasing lot coverage by structures.
So the bird thinks that that pointer's.
I bet if you put that arrow down to the bottom, we could get that bird out of here if you can coax him over there.
Keeps chasing the pointer.
We had a bird, um, my wife screamed bloody murder a few, few months ago, and I thought like we had an invader or something. And I go upstairs, and there was like a finch in a bedroom.
Oh.
And who would have thought, I mean, she, I've never seen somebody so scared of a bird in my life.
You're on TV.
I'm well aware. She's probably watching. She's probably getting really mad at me.
And you're going to die.
But it.
Oh, look, he's trying to get the.
Yeah, he thinks it's a bug. Probably going to hit the screen.
By the time we got the bird out, it looked like there'd been a war.
Looks like a finch from here.
All right, so application seventy-nine dash twenty-one, Anna Michael, one thirty-seven Shore Street, Falmouth, Mass. Apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty to sixty-nine E of the code of Falmouth to allow a plunge pool, increasing lot coverage by structures and subject property known as one thirty-seven Shore Street, Falmouth, Mass. At its meeting on October fifth, twenty twenty-one, the Falmouth Historical Commission voted to approve the application for a certificate of appropriateness under the Falmouth Historic District bylaw, established under Master and Law's Chapter forty C for the installation of a plunge pool and accompanying hardscape, as included in application number twenty-one part forty submitted by Ahmed Clower, LOP, on behalf of the property owner, Anna Michael. Specifically, at the October fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the applicant proposed to install a thirteen-by-seven plunge pool with an ASTM certified cloth cover, place pool equipment on a three-by-six concrete pad located next to the existing house, and to place the existing crushed stone surface with a new patio. Proposed work must be done in accordance with the documentation submitted at the time of the application and discussed on October fifth, twenty twenty-one. This old commission approved the application with the following conditions: the applicant will provide a wooden enclosure for the pool equipment, and such application will be administratively approved, provided it complies with the Falmouth Historic District's design review guidelines. And two, this certificate does not include an approval for any fence that may be required by the Falmouth Building Department. All approved drawings and plans, including the application with material listings, are in file in the Falmouth Planning Office. Any new work, work not granted a certificate of appropriateness or determination of nonapplicability will be performed at the above referenced property. Changes to architectural details, et cetera, shall be presented to the applicant to the Historic Commission for review and approval for adherence to the certificate of appropriateness, which is enforceable by the building commissioner. Uh, from Concom, the project does not appear to be located within conservation jurisdiction. From engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities, counting House Way and Shore Street or public rights of way in this area. No alterations are approved to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project was not directing a storm or to run after public property, abutters of public rights of way. Assessor's department includes lot M and lot two. From planning, they just mentioned the applicant had filed its application scheduled on October fifth. We already have that. The water main and service must be on the plans. The existing home is a one-end service tapped into an eight-inch main in Shore Street. Fire department has no issues as drawn. Uh, no letters for or against.
All right, and Attorney Clower, there's, like I've said before tonight, there's, I'll be appointing Jerry, so there's five of us.
Thank you very much. Again, for the record, my name's Kevin Clower. I'm here tonight representing Anna Michelle of one thirty-seven Shore Street. Uh, this property is located on Shore Street, approximately midway down the road, almost directly between Main Street and Surf Drive. Uh, it's on a lot of thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-seven square feet in the RC zoning district. Uh, it is an historic district, and as has been noted, we did receive a certificate of appropriateness from the Historical Commission. Presently, the dwelling itself is a five-bedroom dwelling with a footprint of just over twenty-seven-hundred square feet. Uh, the dwelling itself is conforming as to setbacks. It is nonconforming as to lot coverage by structure, being twenty-point-six, where twenty is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. Uh, the applicant's been in this house for four years now, and over the past few years, like many others, has determined that she wanted a pool. Uh, in this case, it's a small plunge pool located on the southern side of the property. The addition of this plunge pool will result in lot coverage by structure of twenty-one-point-three percent. As such, we're here tonight seeking a special permit under two forty sixty-nine E, uh, which allows for lot coverage by structure of up to twenty-five percent, and the boards to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow on adjacent property, the impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Uh, this application is, you know, I would say it's unique, but we're seeing more of these. Um, we're seeing, it's these applications where what's triggering the sixty-nine E special permit is, is not a structure as we would think about, but it's a pool. Um, so it's, it's really not what the bylaw envisioned. So when we talk about the size and height of the structure, there's no size and height here to compare. The dwelling itself is largely by right, and the pool is the only aspect of it that's relevant to this permit. So the addition of this pool has no impact on, uh, the views and vistas from public ways, no impact on the size and height of the dwelling or relative to other properties, and no impact on nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Uh, there's no effective shadow. Uh, the pool will not in and of itself have any impact on the neighborhood. We, we did provide a lot comparison worksheet looking at the surrounding properties, and a number of similar, uh, properties in the area have similar footprints and, and lot coverage percentages by structures. The applicant's proposal is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. It will not cause any adverse effects or any new nonconformities. There's no impairment of public view and vistas, and it meets the standards of two forty-two sixteen. Um, I want to note, because I'm sure the question's going to come up, presently, we're not showing a fence on this plan. It is an ASTM certified cloth cover, which is an automatic cover, which actually is one of the exemptions from a, from a fence or alarm requirement. And if the building commissioner disagreed with that, we would of course have to come back before this board to amend for, and the historical commission to amend for a fence. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Jerry, any questions?
Uh, so you're saying you're not going to apply to the building commissioner?
No, we are.
Oh, okay.
We, we're certainly applying to the building commissioner. Um, the, the state building code actually allows for ASTM certified cloth covers as, as an alternative, but if for any reason, Mr. Gore, whomever the, uh, building commissioner might be, says, you know, that may be the case, but we're going to require, we would have to come back.
Yes, okay.
James, I'm not sure I read this. What's the deepest part of this pool?
It's not very deep.
Four feet, four inches?
Yeah.
Okay, I just looking at going, is that a type or not? Just wanted to make sure.
It is a plunge pool. Um, it's, it's a small pool for the purpose of.
So what is that for you? Just.
Cooling off, relaxing.
I had to look up plunge pool, to be honest.
Yeah.
And it.
It's a term I've heard more and more.
The reason I asked the question is that it was usually a short but deep pool, plunge into, come up and out, and then sit. I just wanted to make sure I was reading the plan right. Thank you.
Yeah, Attorney Clower, if, um, you're not seeking any waivers for any variances, the distance away from the septic system for this pool.
No.
So how do you know where the pool, where the septic system is if it hasn't been identified? It's only an approximate.
Uh, I, I would typically defer to the engineers on that. Holmes McGrath located it based on the, the.
They staked it, or they, they said they went off of?
It says the approximate location of the septic system per town records. So they used the existing town records to establish where they thought the septic system was on the site.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Bob?
And this is recently built, isn't it, this one? Or was it remodeled?
Uh, the house was remodeled a few years ago. I don't think it was.
I'm talking about distance from the pool.
No, I'm asking for, for, you know, there's one.
Restrictions with distance to affluent to.
No, I understand. I'm going by, there's a difference between what the records in Town Hall look like from the house in the sixties versus what the records look like in nineteen ninety.
Absolutely right.
What's the distance between the steps coming out of the house into the pool? I mean, there's no.
I, I, I don't know the exact.
Two feet or something? I mean, do you, I mean, I guess it's their choice where they want to put it, but it just seems like that would be a bit of a safety issue.
There's no requirements against that. I mean, the people have pools halfway in and halfway out of the house.
So again, on these, um, on these auto pool covers, so how do they work? Are they manual, or are they?
No, so there's a, there's a key U-turn, which is located, you know, four feet up on, on the side of the, side of the wall. It's a, it's an auto-loading cover that's under the lip of the pool, uh, and, and retracts, it goes over the pool and, and under, underneath the whole lip. It's, it's actually pretty cool. I had to look into them.
I'm not the only one.
It said the rolling motor of a house in a vault at one end of the pool, the track is installed on top of the pool, pool wall, but under the coping. The switch to operate is placed above, above four feet, uh, above four feet on an outer wall of the house typically, and is locked with a key.
It, it's not super pertinent, but any idea why the state allows that not to be offensive? It's manual?
It's because it's not, it's not manual, like we're pulling it. It's manual in the sense that you.
No, but I mean, in case somebody just leaves it open.
But I, but somebody could leave a fence gate open, too.
A lot of fates get fence gates in the pools. I've been to close automatic. I mean, it's just not to be a.
No, I mean, it's, 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 it's seems to be allowed. I've actually seen pictures of like elephants standing on these pool covers. It's kind of crazy.
That's from the salesman for the covers.
My, my question was going to be, what's a plunge pool? But that was already covered tonight. Paul, a comment? Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close. Second.
Motion closed by James. I'll give the second to Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, hearing is closed, passes unanimously. No more testimony may be taken.
Approve with conditions.
Second.
James, findings?
Uh, two forty-six to ninety, two forty to six, two sixteen. Uh, lot coverage is going from twenty-point-six to twenty-one-point-three, uh, where twenty-five percent is allowed under, by special permit.
Only four foot.
Yeah, it's a plunge pool, four foot deep, and it'll have what that cover is that.
Seven by thirteen, dimensions are seven by thirteen, four feet deep.
Uh, applicant received.
Four feet, four inches deep.
Applicant received a certificate of appropriateness from, um, historic, which included that the, um, pool equipment being closed, but did it, did not include a fence? If a fence is required, they would have to go back.
To them or to us, of course.
Well, they'd come back to us, too, if it's a change, but, um, our testimony was with this type of automatic cover, generally a fenced area is not required, but it would be up to the building department and health department. The septic system on the plan shows an approximate location only based on found records, but the system wasn't located.
Anything else for findings?
Wasn't a opposition.
No, thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
Conditions?
Per historic, the certificate of appropriateness, uh, would be subject to approval by the building and health department if, for safety features, if a fence would be required or not.
And in the event during excavation, at the encounter of the septic system.
Well, so here's a question I have for you, since we're writing it up. Do you want them to locate the septic system?
No, I, I, I don't want to split hairs on it. I just, in the future, that's a requirement for pools. And the approximate, the approximate, uh, if it was a, um, a bigger pool, I'd have more problem with it. But it is a requirement. It's a serious requirement because it's a health issue.
Well, I'm only asking because they're going to, they're going to.
I wouldn't hold up on that this time.
Well, no, they're going to have to dig it up anyway, so.
During construction, you want to.
So.
See where the edge of your.
So we should make it something to.
Certainly not going to dig that by hand. So they're going to have to come across that septic system at some point to get to where that, the excavation is.
They'll have to come back to us if there's a big oops.
No, but it's, you know, presumably they will locate.
Well, it goes back to health because it becomes a repair.
Well, no, but.
They locate the septic though, as part of.
At least the tank should be a, a condition that the four corners of the tank closest to the.
Yeah, so why don't we just put that? Because they're going to do a construction at it. So verify location of the four corners of the tank.
That way we've done our job.
Sure. All right. Anything else for conditions?
I don't think it, it must not need long to be constructed.
What job? What's up?
Yeah, I don't think there's any, uh, oh, they, they have to put the, um, the water on the plans for health. Anything else that was in engineering?
There's a ring station there. Does that have to be identified?
It is identified on the plan.
Pardon?
It's shown on the plan.
All right. Anything else?
And then you're requiring the auto pool cover.
Requiring the auto pool cover, cover. And then if there was any changes that are required by the building department, they'd have to submit the revised plans to us for sign-off.
All right. So if that does it, that was a motion approved with conditions made by Bob and second.
Could you just, could you just also just put on there to have, um, the, the health commission just submit the plans that they have, just to make sure they're the same plans?
He concurs.
All right.
The bird's in on that one.
He's not going to.
Motion to approve, uh, with conditions was made by Bob, second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass unanimously. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Oh, one more.
I don't know why, but I thought that was it.
I'm not done yet, sorry guys.
You say hope or thought?
I thought, I actually thought that that was it.
Hearing.
The open door is doing wonders with my allergy.
It's nice the flags keep rippling behind you guys, and it looks very patriotic.
It's bringing in all the golden rod.
All right, so up next, application eighty dash twenty-one, Pasquale Keenan, eleven Harrington Street and T-Ticket, requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures.
So application eighty dash twenty-one, Robert J. Pasquale and Laura Keenan, eleven Harrington Street, T-Ticket, Mass. Apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty to three C and two forty to sixty-nine E of the code of Falmouth to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling exceeding twenty percent lot coverage by structures and subject property known as eleven Harrington Street, T-Ticket. Conservation staff have no comment, as the project appears to be located outside of conservation jurisdiction. Fire department has no issues as drawn. Assessors includes lot fifty-two and fifty-three. Health department property is on sewer, allowed up to four bedrooms. Water department, water main and service must be on the plans. The existing home is a three-quarter inch service fed from a six-inch main on Harrington Street. The addition includes an additional bathroom, so an upgrade to a one-end service is recommended. Provide adequate flow and pressure for the increased plumbing demand. Far from wastewater, no flow, neutral bylaw, hearing of variance is required. The modified home will have three bedrooms, which is allowed by right under the floor neutral bylaw. Uh, they submitted, uh, bulk calculations, and that's it.
Attorney Clower, once again, I will be appointing Jerry, so you'll have five of us.
Thank you. Uh, again, Kevin Clower here tonight representing the applicants, Rocky Pasquale and Laura Keenan, the owners of eleven Harrington Street. They are seeking permission to alter the pre-existing nonconforming dwelling at this property. Um, this is located in northern end of Maravista. It's a very dense, uh, I'd say somewhat homogenous neighborhood. A lot of similarly, similarly styled homes and similarly sized lots. That's a tongue twister. This lot is forty-eight hundred square feet. It's in the RC zoning district, and it is not located in a flood zone. Presently, there's a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed. Uh, the footprint's nine hundred and sixty-two square feet. It's nonconformant to lot, uh, front yard setback being twenty-point-one feet, where twenty-five is required. It's otherwise conforming to lot coverage and setback requirements. The applicants are requesting to add a modest addition, uh, to expand a kitchen and dining area, which is presently kind of cramped, to better utilize the existing layout and dimensions on the second floor as well, although it's not really relevant to this, as they're, they're converting a storage space into a bathroom. Uh, the proposed changes will not increase the number of bedrooms, which remain at three. There's no change to the bridge height. Uh, the existing bridge height is nineteen feet four and a half inches. four and a half inches. Um, the, the proposed ridge height of the addition is, is lower than that. Uh, the addition increases the footprint by a hundred and twenty-four square feet. Uh, lot coverage by structure, the resulting lot coverage by structure is twenty-two-point-six percent, so we require a special permit under two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E.